Good evening and welcome to the Verona Board of Education public meeting. It is September 13, 2022, and we are calling the meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM. And if everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is in the back corner. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reading of the meeting notice. This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the open meeting session that the Verona Board of Education passed a resolution at its annual reorganization meeting held on January 4, 2022. The meeting set forth the schedule of its regular meetings, which resolution was within seven days of passage. The school, the schedule was sent to the Verona Cedar Grove Times, the Star Ledger, the Township of Verona, and the VEA. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. The Verona Board of Education operates under a consent agenda format. Any board member has the right to have an item pulled to be voted upon or discussed separately. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public and the press. Mr. Cruz, can you please roll call for attendance?
Sure. Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Day. For the record, Mr. Day is absent. Mrs. Strappy?
Here.
Mrs. Prisco?
Here.
Mrs. Freshy?
Here.
We have corn. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have no presentations this evening, so we're going to go right to the superintendent report with Ms. De Giuseppe.
Thank you. So we have some happenings going on around the district. First of all, school opened. It was a great opening. I think it was very smooth. Lots of happy faces. We had our convocation with the staff the day before. And as we were talking about earlier, they started with Gloria Estefan and Miami Sound Machine and get on your feet and make it happen. So they're ready to do that. And it's going to be a great year. We have the Valerie Fund Walk and Run, which is a walk, walkathon, a 5K run actually on September 17 to support Valerie Fund, which is cancer awareness. We also have, I'm going to let Mr. Cruz talk about Verona Wellness Day later on. Yeah. So Girls in Gear, for those who don't know what Girls in Gear is, Girls in Gear are life skills through bike skills. And that's going to be happening on Saturday at the FN Brown parking lot where girls help build riders confidence, both on their bikes and off. So it's a program to help bring, increase confidence. Then we have Senior Portraits, as you can tell by the equipment to my left. And picture days are starting. So that's the 13th to the 16th this week for Senior Portraits and the 19th for the High School Picture Day. We have professional development. So school is closed on Friday, the 23rd, and that kind of coincides with Rosh Hashanah day off on Monday, the 26th. We had some honor roll assemblies at HBW starting yesterday and today. And we will have the eighth graders tomorrow from last year's end of the year honor roll in the auditorium tomorrow, the 14th. Back to school nights are starting up. The first one is at Brookdale on the 21st. And then we have FNB is on the 15th with their picture day on the 27th. Forest has their back to school night on the 20th and then Lanning on the 22nd. The rest are in October and we'll give those dates at the next meeting. An update on the director search. We are in contract negotiations with the finalists, so all good. And hope that we can get them onto an agenda soon so we can get that rolling. We did three rounds. The first round was an interview with the consultant. We did three rounds. The first round was an interview with the consultant that is working with the board to find a director of special services. The second two rounds were committee of staff members, and this was a combination of administrative, district and building administrators, teachers, child study team members, and administrative assistants in the department. There were 10 people in addition to myself and Mr. Kenoing on that committee across the two rounds. And we are confident that Mrs. Hyde, who hit the ground running, will be able to keep things moving in the right direction until the new director can start. Most of my report today is kind of, kind of centered on the commissioner's convocation. So Commissioner of Education, Dr. Angelica Allen McMillan. For the first time in three years, they held a live convocation. I was at King University yesterday. And she and her staff spoke for several hours to a group of Northern Region superintendents. Primarily about the districts that the New Jersey Department of Education is embarking on, as well as answering questions that were both submitted ahead of time, as well as on the spot. She spoke, one of the questions that we submitted as a district was answered, and she did her best to explain about Start Strong. And why, even though districts like Verona, who does a lot of in-house testing with a standardized test that can show a correlation between how our students do on NJSLA, why can't we waive out of this particular requirement? And, you know, she said, so for those districts that don't do that, Start Strong is a great opportunity. However, the state needs more data, especially after COVID. So they're under a microscope from their stakeholders, their board, State Board of Education, and different constituents in the state that want her to be able to report to them on how New Jersey students are doing after COVID. And they have no data. So Start Strong is a quick, it's a quick assessment. It is designed to be given in September. She did extend the window until October. Although it's a much more valid test given early on because what happened, it looks for prerequisite skills from last year. So we all know what happens in September, people review from last year. So it's not as valid the longer out you give it. But they did make the concession because they realized that no one expected this to be a longstanding required assessment. Although I do think it will be at least one more year where it will be a requirement before they get enough information from the NJSLA, the Student Learning Assessment, that they can start making heads or tails of it. So she did indicate that she was the one that pushed for it and is asking us to be patient and understand that they need information as well. She also spoke about the teacher shortage in New Jersey and across the country. The National Education Association recently conducted a survey that found unfortunately that 50% of current teachers are looking to leave the position, especially after COVID. And, and what they, and to follow up with that, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Foundation did a study that showed a sharp increase in teacher anxiety since COVID. So we have teacher anxiety increasing along with, we know student anxiety is up as well as people looking to get out of the profession. Which is just compounding this problem. So they're investigating ways to increase the number of teachers in the candidate pool. They're working with their partners in higher ed to change certification requirements without reducing the quality of candidates. One thing that they did point out that will be helpful, once they get it up and running. We have a new website in New Jersey called New Jersey EdCert for teachers that are seeking certification. Right now, it is just links to the Department of Education website. What they would like to do over the next year is link it to every district that wants to connect with our job posting portal. So a teacher that goes on to become certified at New Jersey EdCert can go and say, well, I live in Essex County. I'd like to maybe teach in Verona, Cedar Grove, Montclair. They can go to those district websites right off of that and see if there's job openings, which will be very helpful. Let's hope it happens quickly. She also spoke about learning acceleration, and learning acceleration is something that Verona schools have been focused on for many years. It's more important now after COVID. Learning acceleration is just the idea that we use formative assessment to accelerate learning versus to remediate after COVID. And to make sure that we are working, you can, you can reach prerequisite skills while you're still accelerating learning is what, what our plan over the past two years has focused on. They're looking for ways to support districts where learning loss and learning lag, I guess you could call them, have been high. Unlike places like Verona and some of our similar socioeconomically, economic districts, they used to call them district factor grouping. Where we didn't see as much learning loss as some of the urban areas. There is something that really piqued my interest. Rutgers University School Climate Survey is a school climate improvement initiative. They're offering to school districts a school climate survey that focuses on following domains, and this is a survey that can be given to students, staff, and parents. And so some of the domains are student sense of belonging. Or all respondents academic culture and classroom practices, supportive staff, student relationships, behavioral expectations. There's a lot, but I'm just reading some of them. Student voice involvement, sense of physical safety, then for staff only, leadership support, organizational resources and support. And there's, you know, some stuff just for families and caregivers such as family support and engagement questions. And it's free to districts and Rutgers University will score it and provide recommendations for how you can address some of the, some of the areas where you come out where you're less than where you want to be. There's something else that they spoke about yesterday that are important. I spoke to Jorge about it today. The last time New Jersey did, these grants are called ROD grants or regular operating district grants was in 2000 when Mr. Cruz was in New York. So, but we were waiting for more information. They're generally capital improvement grants, grants, and they're interest free for school district, and they are also entering into their third round of school security grants. So I'm waiting for the application to come out for that one. Because we could certainly use some school security improvement. That's my report for this evening. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So the first question is, I imagine the answer is going to be, I don't know. But, you know, we use Life Touch for the, for the pictures now, and, you know, they are what they are in terms of quality, but, but they, they do offer a fairly competitive kickback to the districts as far as the percentage of money you'll get back. Do we traditionally spread that money out per school based on how much pictures each school, you know, how much money they generate? Or is it just one check that we use to put in the general fund for whatever we want to do?
So that's usually per school. So it depends on if it's here at the high school, it will be the high school account that will get actually that fund. It comes back as a fundraiser. And for student activities.
That's awesome. All right. Thank you. Another one, I know it's not part of your report, but I just saw the email today. They're, they're asking districts if they want to get in a lawsuit against the vaping company, the Juul lawsuit. And I'm not sure exactly how much money is there in that. It's not called the class action. It's called something else. Is that something that we think is worth doing?
It's a class action lawsuit. And apparently they have about 800 or 900 different districts throughout the country. My take on these is it's like any other class action, you know, half of the money is going to go to the lawyers and the other half, if there's anything left, is going to go to whichever districts are around. So you might get something, but I don't think you're going to get a lot if, if they're successful.
Perfect. And then just the last comment, the Rutgers thing seems promising. I just, with Rutgers, the only thing I've noticed is that like they draw you into a program, then like every three months, they want 10 of your staff members to go down to Piscataway. It's just, it's, we can't even staff it now with all the shortages. So they, they get a little greedy with, or ambitious with what they're trying to do, but I do like the spirit of it. That's all.
Yeah, I've not worked with Rutgers in this capacity before. In another capacity in my prior district, we did. Good surveys are very expensive. So if this is free and we can, you know, years future, we'll send our teachers down maybe. Thank you.
No, I think it's a good point to bring up because this was a recommendation from our DITI consultancy shipper was to do this annually. If not biannually, beginning of the year, the end of the year. And that will help us create sort of action plans on how to improve climate and culture. So I think it's a good start. You know, it's free. And if it's not something that serves its purpose, then we can look into spending money on something a little bit more in depth.
Anything else?
Just to add to the Verona Wellness Day. So, so this is actually going to be our first Verona Wellness Day is going to be held on Friday, September 23rd. From 8:00 AM to noon right here in the learning comments. It's going to be open to all Verona staff. This is just a way for us to kind of like have a focus on wellness and especially post-COVID. Ensuring that our staff is actually taking care of themselves. We partner with AmeriHealth. Some of the things that they're going to be providing at no cost is BMI screening, cholesterol, glucose, blood pressure. And also a nutritionist, an opportunity to schedule time with a nutritionist to have that focus. So it's definitely something that we will like to continue doing. It's going to be the first of a annual, and then hopefully the following year will also include flu shots available to staff as well.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
I have a dumb question. Where is the Verona Commons? Oh, this is it?
Chris?
I thought it was the, oh, the Learning Commons. Okay. Or the library. Okay. Very good. That is.
All right.
You own it.
Okay. So we're going to move on to our committee reports and we had education committee?
Yes, we met, was that yesterday? Yeah. Oh, that was yesterday. It was Monday? Yeah, that's yesterday. And it was, it was a very light agenda. A lot of it focused on Resolution Number Three on the agenda. School Policy 7250. We had a discussion on just some of the language around the policy and then I mean, that was really, we talked a little bit about Start Strong, which Ms. De Giuseppe spoke about in her superintendent's report. And I don't, I mean, that was really all we talked about. Yeah, it was a very short meeting.
Do you want to read that statement that we said we'd read?
Oh, okay. Before you move on to the statement, let me, let me just ask about Resolution Number Three in that reading.
Okay.
So it's back as a first reading because I know this has come on. So we're back to this is a first reading.
Back as a first reading. And then that way, you know, we have an opportunity to discuss it and then make any changes if needed prior to our second reading for the next meeting.
Yeah, Ms. Board President, what we, what I guess what we thought was a reasonable thing was just to, to structure the idea of the naming. So we didn't want someone to have to be deceased, you know, necessarily to get this honor. But we also wanted a more structured process where, you know, at a certain time of year, if there's a certain metric about how many signatures you need to get, and then a committee that's comprised of a bunch of different stakeholder groups. If they give it the green light to go to the next level, then the board would take a look at a certain board meeting each year, a certain time each year to say yes or no, or maybe. But we thought this was just a, we thought it was a more equitable and more detailed process. So.
And sort of standardized across the board, so no matter.
So as it reads in here now, it would not be during an individual's lifetime.
Right. That was supposed to be, I thought you changed it in real time. I guess it didn't come up in the PDF. The new PDF was not entered in. We took that out. Yeah. We did take that out. So I guess it just didn't come back up as a PDF when you changed it.
A good catch.
Oh, so that was it. It didn't, it didn't get re, okay. So it has to get put back in the public folder. Yeah. So I guess what we had said was like, giving a certain number of signatures, that's, you know, rigorous but attainable. You know what I mean? If we're naming something after a person, it has to be, you know, not unanimous across the district, but it has to be a large portion of our district that agrees with it. And, you know, whether that's community members or staff, faculty, family members, you know. And I think that was sort of the idea around it. So we were thinking like 100, 150 signatures on a petition and, you know, the template would be made by the district and that would be what they would have to use to find the signatures, you know, from the board website. And then, like Mr. Walker said, that petition would be brought to the committee, which would only meet, you know, once or twice a year. And then they would have to essentially make their case to the committee in person with those signatures. And then the committee would do all the vetting. Right? They would do all the research, all the background, all of that. And then if they felt, if they agreed with that, then they would bring that to the board.
So as we stand tonight, though, I'm going to strike that paragraph that should be.
No.
Well, this is the first reading. So I think that what we could do is, you know, I agree, strike that first paragraph, right? But, you know, we could come back, you know, Sarah and I, whoever, you know, the superintendent delegates or designates and fill in the blanks as far as how many signatures you need and what, what timeline.
And I wouldn't even drill down that, that far. Because it's, it's, I don't know. It's too specific. Like I feel like policies should be more big picture.
Well, I think this should be a good example of the difference between policy and regulation. So we can have the policy be, like you said, kind of black and white, but then the regulation be where we'd actually have the, the metrics of how we enforce it.
So I mean, then as it stands now, when we take out that second paragraph, that policy would stand.
Yeah, leave that latitude.
That would, then the rest of that policy would stand as fine. And then the regulation would be drawn up by the superintendent.
Yeah, one line would have to go in there to draw people to the regulation because generally regulations exist for things that have administrative code.
Right.
It just doesn't. So this would be like the in-house regulation.
Okay.
And we could do the, we could link the form in there as well.
Yeah.
If we wanted to have a district form to keep a uniform.
Yeah. Okay. So then just to clarify, the only change when we're voting on it this evening is that paragraph two is stricken.
And again, this was, I mean, this was taken from a variety, this is a combination of variety sources.
Yeah.
So we looked at this process, we looked at, right. And we looked at a lot of different districts and what they use and what we felt was appropriate for our district. So this, you know, this wasn't pulled out of thin air. So.
And then to move on to have that statement read as part of the.
Just to preface, as I tell, if you want to read, that's great. But, um, you know, we want to always have really strong relations with the child group. I think moving forward, you know, we'd likely put this as part of a correspondence or invite the leadership of that group to come up to board meeting to give these. Because we don't, we don't want to start a precedent of, of, you know, just kind of, you know, because it's talking about it off campus, you know, meeting. But, um, you know, we do think that the mission of that, this group is highly important. So for today, we wanted to read this. And your eyesight is better than mine, Sarah.
Yeah, I can read it. I just want to pull it up really quick. Here we go. Okay. Verona Child, children having individual learning differences is a nonprofit organization dedicated to providing support to children who receive special education services from the Verona Public Schools. Child also serves as their district's CPAC. We want to take this opportunity to welcome our interim director of special services, Ms. Nicole Hyde, and our two new board members, Fred Tempesta and Michelle O'Neil. We also wanted to extend gratitude to our retired board members, Jean Anne Droste and Karen Ebold, for the many years of service they dedicated to our organization. We welcome parents and caregivers of students who receive special services to attend our monthly parent-to-parent support group meetings. These meetings will be hybrid in person with a virtual option in the fireman's room in Verona Community Center at 7:00 PM. A Zoom link will be sent out in advance of each meeting. Upcoming support group meetings are on September 22nd and October 27th. Open CPAC meetings. Special Education Parent Advisory Council meetings are a public forum for parents and caregivers to give input to the district regarding systemic programs, services, policies, and concerns that have an impact on students who receive special services. The Director of Special Services and Child Board Members facilitate these meetings. Our first open CPAC meeting is scheduled for October 12th in the VHS auditorium, 7:00 PM. If you would like to get involved with Child or receive our emails, please contact us at childverona@gmail.com. Future support group and open CPAC meeting dates and additional information can be found at our website at www.veronachild.com. And again, this isn't a board sanctioned event. And again, this isn't a board sanctioned event. This is a this is Child's event. And they had asked us to report this out at our meeting. There was something else I wanted to say. Oh, and normally we do report out the CPAC meetings after they are reported to us, like the meeting dates, when we meet with the Special Services Director during our committee meetings. But, you know, in absence of that, we have, you know, we haven't received those dates yet. So.
Thank you. Was there anything else on education? Any questions? Nope. And then did facilities meet? Oh, okay, because I had one page that has facilities and one that doesn't. So facilities did not meet. Okay, so I'm going to cross that out. And at this point, we're going to open it up to public comments on agenda action items. That's anything that we're going to vote on in the resolutions. You can please come to the podium, please state your name, where you live, and it's a three minute time limit per person. Thank you.
Hi, Denise Frizzella, 130 Personette Avenue. I just have a question about resolution number seven, which involves the elementary gifted and talented criteria. Could you tell us what the criteria are? It's not listed anywhere in the agenda. And also, does this mean that there may be a change in we can like actually get a gifted and talented program at some point in Verona? I know. My child would have loved it, and I'm sure other children would have too. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this up because this is something that we spoke about at committee and I neglected to bring my agenda. So thank you for reminding me. This is something you spoke about at committee was reorganizing and and reevaluating the way that we identify students and gifted and talented. And if the term gifted and talented should be used, or if it's really just gifted, if we're talking about academics only and what this program will look like going forward. There is a hope that in the next year, within the budget, we can consider employing or finding a gifted and talented teacher, whether that's part time or full time, that remains to be seen within the budget. What was restructured was the way that students are identified. Now that we are in heavily invested into the map growth testing, it really is a great tool to help identify. And then, you know, also teacher recommendations to sort of narrow down the 15% to then the 10% and looking at really first grade through third grade. Was that first grade? It was first grade through third? First through fourth, excuse me. And then a rubric, a standardized rubric was introduced. And it's something that we discussed at length. I can't believe I forgot this. I my apologies. That is sort of a matrix and it's a way to look at each individual student and their strengths. And, you know, how does that lend itself towards a gifted or a gifted intelligent program?
It's based on the traits of gifted giftedness from the National Association for Gifted Children. Do you want me to give the?
Yeah, yeah, because you have it up.
Yeah, the categories are that they'll be looking at. So it's a one to four rating scale in the following categories. There's like subheadings in each category, cognitive, creative, affective, and behavioral. And if you're interested, it's National Association for Gifted, N A G C dot org. You can see those.
And I can't help but say this. Districts have the right to choose whatever metrics that they want for a G and T program. And I do like that there's more than one metric here and the grades, the assessment results, teacher recs, counselor note to, you know. So I like that we're standardizing it and I guess it's fair to use the national ones. But if we could change it any given year, if we think there's a different metric that that might work better. But it's personally, I just I'm not crazy about identifying any elementary kids being gifted versus not gifted. I think they're just way too young to even put that label on them. I think they're they're still developing their gifts at that age. So, you know, it's a state mandate to have this program, you know, but if every year we're here, we change it and then keep improving it, I would be fine with that, too.
I think the key is is multiple measures. Right? So to make sure that we're looking at multiple measures, teacher recommendation, parent recommendation, different criteria, academic, standardized, non-standardized, just to make sure that we're hitting all of this. We don't want students to fall through the cracks in our program that we don't have yet. But right now we're required to identify students and we do differentiate in the classroom. So that's where we're getting where we really are looking at. How do we extend for those students that need extension versus kids that need remediation or kids that are kind of in either one of those groups in the classroom?
And it's it's my understanding that that ed mentum pathways program that matches up with math map growth is a big piece of this puzzle. So when we're looking for enrichment for children who are working above grade level, that program is an important tool at the elementary level to really push those kids to new heights because it grows with them. So as they grow, the program gets more difficult, more challenging, and makes them think more critically. And I know that was like, at least as a board member, to approve that program, that was a big selling point for me. I would say part of the discussion that we had too was the only concern that I had about that, that the rubric was the behavioral piece of the rubric. You know, as a special education teacher, I can't, I can't like not think about those kids who are gifted, but who are labeled as not gifted because of those behaviors that they exhibit. So that's the only thing that I sort of was hesitant on when we were looking at that and and asked Dr. Miller to sort of revisit that and think maybe how we could avoid using that as a metric.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on resolution items? If not, we are going to close the portion of the meeting for public comments on agenda items. And we're going to move on to discussion items. And the one thing that I do want to mention is the board received an email from a parent alerting us to some concerns of the lighting that wasn't going on in front of the high school at the at the pickup, the U spot. So our facilities director immediately checked into that and found out that there was a faulty timer on the light. So he did order new ones. So as soon as we get those new timers in, that's going to be addressed. And one of the lights is actually on a P S E and G pole. So P S E and G has been called and they will be coming in to troubleshoot and fix that. So I do want to say thank you. And it it's really helpful when community members, parents do see something that's not right to alert us because we are not everywhere all the time. So thank you for that. And it is getting addressed. Are there other discussion items that anybody wanted to bring up, new business, old business?
I just wanted to thank faculty and staff and administrators for making opening day so awesome for my kids and for everyone's kids in the district. It was it was really cool to see everybody maskless walk into the building.
Yeah.
At landing, Mr. Froyen had his speaker really loud pumping. You could hear it down the street, music player, and people were dancing up the street. It was just, it was really great to see. So thank you to everybody for making that happen for our kids.
So like, I don't thank people probably as much as I should, but, um, you know, something happened and, you know, there was a scary situation in our household yesterday. And the athletic trainer went really above and beyond anything that, you know, we could have, we could have possibly expected to the point of, you know, making appointments for us today. And just it really made a scary situation a lot more reassuring. So, you know, thank you for that big time.
Okay, so we are going to move on to the roll call to vote on resolutions. I need a motion to approve resolutions number one through 11. Some of moved by Mrs. Drappy. And second by Mrs. Prisco. And is there any discussion on any of those? I had a question actually under co-curricular number eight point one with the the clubs and the stipends. So there's no, I see ninth grade, 10th grade and 12th grade. I didn't see 11th grade class advisors. Are there 11th grade class advisor?
We have not gotten a name yet, so they're they're looking to have someone.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if it was an oversight.
Nope.
And then just the difference in the amount of money on the stipends, is that determined based on class size or the amount of work that the?
Generally, for the class advisor, it's the amount of work. Yeah.
That goes into it.
Yeah, proms and stuff.
Yeah, it kind of gets pushed up as you go up.
Yeah, they fundraise a lot during ninth and 10th grade. And then you get to 11th and 12th, there's a lot of planning.
Gotcha. And then I just wanted to go back to that resolution number three. So we've been talking about policy seven two five O since January. So I'm happy to see it back here as a first reading again. We've gone through a lot of iterations. And I'm just going to put out there, I was happy to see that paragraph two still in there and not happy to see it stricken because my personal bias is in anybody's lifetime to have something memorialized, things go wrong and there's never there. Something named after somebody within their lifetime, if something negative comes up about that person, it goes to a whole backpedaling. And sometimes there's nothing at the time of the naming. And once it's named, another group might come up and rebut it. And then it just kind of you left with egg on your face. So I am going to vote now on number three. I don't know. Do we need to pull that out as separate or when I just do my vote, I could just say?
Okay, can we? I mean, we can further discuss that as well because if you look at the bottom of the policy, it says it does not obligate the board to maintain the individual's memorialization of a school building room or structure for any specific period of time. So I mean, I agree with what you're saying. I do.
I'm just thinking that's happening.
I had I had felt that way at first I had, and I don't think anyone's wrong for for thinking that way, right? I could foresee a situation if there's a beloved staff member who is hypothetical. But if there's a beloved staff member and they're and they're dying of leukemia or some kind of disease, I don't want us to say to them, once you die, then you can start the process to their family, right? Like, I don't want it to be like that. So that's why.
I understand that as well. And my rationale and thinking to that point is that anytime we have a policy, the board does have the power to waive a policy or suspend portions of a policy. So I would rather not pass a policy based on a possibility on an exception on a what if rather than a broader rule. So that's just my my own feeling.
We still have the vote, the right to say no, though, right? So we still have that 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 stage or whatever we the regulation gets made. But I get it.
Yeah. So if there's no other discussion, Mr. Cruz, can you do the roll call?
Mr. Walker on resolutions one through 11.
But not for three.
You want to pull three, vote on it separately?
We don't have to vote on it separately. I'm just gonna.
Oh, I see. Then I'm going to vote yes.
For the record, Mr. Day's absent. Mrs. Strappy for resolutions one through 11.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco for resolution one through 11.
Yes.
And Ms. Freshy, resolutions one through 11 excluding three and voting.
I'm going to vote no on number three.
Yep.
And the rest, yes.
Okay. Thank you. We have quorum motion passed on resolutions one through 11.
Thank you very much. And then we have addendum resolutions. I need a motion to accept addenda resolutions number one through six. Move by Mrs. Prisco.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Drappy. Is there any discussion on one through six?
Yes, I have a question on resolution number three.
Yes, so one of the things that Dr. Moreyello put in place prior to his exit was a film class at at the high school. And Mrs. Abnizia looked far and wide to find a streaming service that would support being able to watch as many films as they can without having to purchase individual films. So SWANK is something that has films that can be used across many departments in the high school, history, science, et cetera. So the license is for as many films as we need to show or clips of films or pieces of films for all of the high school teachers at an extremely reasonable price. I don't.
I was just gonna say, for how much?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
But not free, but.
No, they're not free, but it's reasonable.
Reasonable. Okay.
Yeah.
And that's just for the high school.
Yeah.
I got a chance to to review the syllabus of that class and I was just, I thought it was a really impressive class they put together.
If there's no further discussion, Mr. Cruz, can you please give the call for the vote?
Mr. Walker for addendum resolution one through six.
Yes.
For the record, Mr. Day's absent, Ms. Strappy.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
And Ms. Freshy.
Yes.
We have quorum motion passed.
Thank you very much. And now we can open the floor to public comments. And this is comments on anything that you would like to bring up. And if you come to the podium, to please start with your name, address, and it is a three minute limit. And I would invite anybody up. And seeing that there is none, we will move on. So I do need, if there's nothing else, I think we're ready to adjourn then. I always feel like it's too short. I mean, yeah, this is going to be a record for sure. It doesn't feel natural. I need a motion before I do the motion to adjourn, our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 27th, beginning our confidential session at 6:00 PM with our public session here in the learning comments at 7:00 PM. And I need a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
Moved by Mrs. Drappy.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Prisco. And all in favor, I need a verbal eye.
Eye.
And we are officially adjourned at 7:41. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night and have.